Just realized my mic wasn't on. All right, move on to the approval of minutes of the meeting held on October 12th. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. You didn't have anybody wishing to address the board on either non-agenda or agenda items. We'll move on to item six, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Onto the good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. We often hear about state championships in sports like football, basketball, soccer, volleyball. This weekend, we crowned champions in cross country and also in cheer and dance. And those accolades are, of course, well deserved for those athletes. But we also have accomplishments of high school journalists. And I, in my tenure, have not brought them forth to share some of the hard work that they do in the classroom and is recognized statewide. The South Dakota High School Press Association was founded 100 years ago in 1922 by Paul Kreiser, who was the head of the Journalism Department at South Dakota State College at that time. Now, 100 years later, South Dakota students that staff our high school newspapers, yearbooks, and other publications are still being recognized for their hard work. Last week, students attended the high school press convention in Brookings at SDSU, and all four of our Sioux Falls schools were honored for their accomplishments. Each of our high schools scored very well in the competition, and they took home several group and individual honors. Tonight, we wanted to bring forth the work of Washington High School as Washington's yearbook rose to the top of that division with the highest score for its yearbook titled Fire It Up. Washington also captured a bunch of other additional awards in photography and news writing. Cindy Heckin-Liebel leads that group of journalists. Some have since graduated, but she has a whole nother crew of kiddos that are working hard. And she took a minute away from conferences tonight to come here and share with you and highlight a bit of that work. And you all have a copy of the yearbook in front of you, and I was already dazzled by the cover. So we'll invite Cindy to come forward and share a few words.
I'm very excited about this. First of all, you should know that for a number of years, the state took away the recognition of the top yearbook award and only gave superiors. And we have quite a few superior trophies sitting back in my room, but was thrilled that they brought this back. It's been about 10 years since they've done that, and I was used to winning that in another district, too. So I was happy that it came back. And we speak by one point. The cover is a stunner, and the kids came up with the theme Fire It Up. It was post-COVID, and their idea, you know, what would we want to say about this year? And they said, it's time to fire things up again, to get things going. And from there, I took that idea and did the design, et cetera, that you see with the fire various places. I designed the cover as well. And then our sales rep said he would pay for the foil. And I think that's what really makes that book pop. And so very excited about that. And as you can see, a big trophy plaque this year. And Macy Gasper is here. She has not seen this yet, but she took first place in her category as the top photographer or top photo in the school activity. And it's, I don't have the page numbers because you have the books, but it's Mr. W H S is her photo. There is an index that would have Mr. W H S on the back. So Macy, come on up. I want to give you your...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we have four other photographers who took home superiors as well.
Eighty-six and eighty-seven.
Eighty-six.
If someone hands me a book and you share for a minute, I can give you the page numbers of the other.
We found it, eighty-six. There's five. Oh.
Page three. The fire theme, we tried to get photos that helped show that as well. And that center picture that you say on page three was also a superior award winner. Then I know I have to go to the junior section. If I can find it. Somewhere, there's a great football picture. Ah, page 28. You can see that Sidney Seeler caught quite a great action shot there at the top. And we have the football page. If I can find that. Page 137. The dominant photo on that page also took a superior photo award. And I know I'm blanking on some of these. Oh, I know. Sorry, I didn't have time to get these written down. Also, page 84. The one with her working at Starbucks. So I think, I think that's all of them. This year, Washington is celebrating its 100th Old Letter Days. And so we tried to come up with an idea that could showcase that. And our theme is linked, and we're going to be linking old with the new, having some link alerts. Goal is to have QR codes with video in support of the yearbook as well as the text and typical layout as well. And we researched all the old books, and we're going to have some history pages in there showing homecoming as it changes and seniors traditions. Did you know they used to have mascots? The seniors had a bird one year, and then they had a dog another year. And they had all these things that we didn't know about. So we're going to try to showcase a little bit of that as well. So questions from anyone?
Well, it just is awe-inspiring in that as staff and the students really captured the brilliance of exceptional journalism and photography and what that does for community building and the culture at Washington High School.
I appreciate that. Thank you. The program has grown. This is the first year that I've had two sections. So that's exciting that the news is out and more, more students are getting involved in it as well. So we're excited, hopefully.
I know my daughter was in the yearbook class at Lincoln, and I thought, oh, that'll be, it'll be fun, and it'll be easy. And I was amazed at the amount of work that those, all of those students put in it, into it. But then really excited to see the end outcome of, and everybody enjoying their books and finding each other and complimenting different, you know, pages or layouts or stories or things like that. So it was something that she probably wouldn't have done otherwise, but it was a great experience for her, as I imagine it is with all of the students who get to put something together.
I think it is for most of them. Some of them are a little bit surprised because there's, there's more to it than that. It also is one of those classes that has at least 30 applicable world skills that you don't see in every class because it's a collaborative effort and it's working independently and it's using technology. And I teach my students with the Adobe programs, which is the industry standard. New advisors who don't have the experience might just use the company's software, but they can go out and already have something on their resume that not everyone else can, can claim. And so some Photoshop work, self-taught personally on all of that because my first job said, here, you have newspaper. And so, and 26 years later, I'm still involved in the Journalism Department. So it has become my great love, and so I hope I can inspire kids to love it as well.
I'd like to congratulate the kids, but I worked with you, and I know how hard you worked. And I'm very proud of you and your program.
Thank you. Yeah, for every hour they put in, I might put in five behind the scenes, so.
I think Mark Ward hit the Washington colors, and you're on tonight. But the, I would see our advisor at Lincoln, you know, at golf needs taking notice so that when kids couldn't make it, the advisor is always there to make sure that everything gets done. So thank you for all your expertise.
You're welcome. I haven't had to do too much photography, but I'm doing everything else. So I'm grateful for that, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. That's it? That's, okay. Just making sure we didn't have a second story or anything. We did not have any conflicts of interest tonight, so moving on to item nine, approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second. Awesome. Thank you.
Motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All the, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. Moving on to the supplemental consent agenda, we have 10A, one, two, and three claims to Sanford. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, and that motion passes with one abstention from board member writer. And then we have 10B, item claims to Rivera. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes with one abstention from myself. All right, on to the reports of the superintendent.
We have two reports tonight. First one, Deanne Conrad will give to us, which is our demographics report. We heard enrollment, and so this gives us just a little more detail now after hearing the numbers last board meeting as to who our student population is. And then we're going to follow that with our academic report. As you know, the state report card has been out about a week or so, and I'll talk a little bit about that before we have that report. Thank you, Dr. Stavum. It's my pleasure to bring to you the 2022 district demographic report for the school board's acknowledgement tonight. This report is a compilation of many people's hard work, and it's, this PowerPoint is sort of a wealth of information that helps us maintain our focus on the students and families that we're privileged to serve in the Sioux Falls School District. This report is often referenced by both school and community leaders as one of the most accurate metrics for the future of Sioux Falls. And so we start at the heart of who we are in the Sioux Falls School District and what we strive to do each day in each of our 36 schools, and that is our mission. Our mission is to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. Of course, that mission broadly covers the academic preparation of our students to be successful. It also includes lessons taught through, as you heard, extracurriculars and leadership experiences, community service, and just a variety of other opportunities for our students. To further focus, we've named five priority areas that you are all familiar with: student excellence, well-being, community engagement, staff excellence, and the effective use of our resources. At our last meeting, you heard our official fall enrollment report taken on the last Friday in September, which is reflected in this slide. Enrollment in the Sioux Falls School District, we're proud to say, has returned to our pre-pandemic levels, and we are grateful to see that rebound up approximately 200 students over the prior year. Last year, Dr. Stavum asked for sort of a snapshot of enrollments, and I think we were all surprised to see the results of that request. In 2021, 22, during that school year, we were pleased to welcome students from 43 states and 41 countries to Sioux Falls. We met several families last year and continue to meet new families this year, two of which we were able to feature in our Ignite publication that came to all postal customers in the Sioux Falls School District in August. They moved here for better opportunities for their family, and we are proud that they chose the Sioux Falls Public Schools for their children's education. For the past two decades or so, our district has become more racially diverse at the rate of 1% to 2% each school year. Today, our classrooms are welcoming to any student who walks through the doors. If you walk into a classroom, you will see an eclectic mix of students from across the world, and we are proud to have those students in our classroom, and they really bring the world to us. This next graph provides a look at the enrollment diversity by grade, and I highlighted the kindergarten line and the 12th grade line. And you can look at that and see the change over time in each of those diverse categories. And it's just interesting to see that the graduating seniors who will be leaving us this year, how much more so diverse our kindergarten students are who are entering the Sioux Falls School District. We continue to be trusted by families who are new to our country and to Sioux Falls, and we are able to provide intense English language instruction to 2,632 students. Some of these students are at the very beginning of their language development. Those students are often found at our early or elementary immersion center or in our immersion programs at the middle and high schools. While others have progressed and only need limited supports to be successful in their classes, still others have graduated completely from our ELL classes, and they are excelling in regular and advanced education classrooms. The families of these students speak 75, I'm sorry, 77 languages in their homes. Our next slide is always one that generates a lot of interest in the community, the district's rate of free and reduced lunch. Unfortunately, the data for this slide was thrown off considerably, as we know, by the pandemic. You see the left side of the blue bar there off to the right of your screen, the left side of that chart, all of those dots on there remain pretty consistent over time with the top blue dots representing the percentage of elementary students who qualified for free and reduced lunch. The orange in the middle is our middle school students, and the green at the bottom is our high school students. This number, we believe at the top, that 49%, more accurately reflects what is actually happening in our families as elementary families are more likely to fill out our free and reduced meal application. Some of that falls off unfortunately as students enter middle school and then by high school. We know that we have open campus for students, and sometimes students are commuting from one class to another, maybe out to CTE and the like, and so those forms just don't get, get filled out. So that's a potential impact there. Also, the, the numbers on the left are, were previously collected from our May counts of free and reduced meals. We are able now, because we have the technology and the, the ability to do it, to take our October count. And so our October count currently sits for our elementary at 45.6% of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. At middle school, that's 37.6%, and high school, 30.5%. Our staff are working very hard to continue to have families fill out that free and reduced meal application form. We all had free meals from March of 2020 through the end of June 2022. Now, child nutrition, our social workers, our school nurses, office staff, our liaisons, anyone that's connected to a family in need is really working hard to get all of those families to complete that paperwork again. They didn't have to do it for two years, and so many, as I said, many new families have come here as well. And so some of them have not gotten into the habit of filling out that free and reduced meal application. So we continue to work very hard on getting that done, and it's a challenge and, and one that our child nutrition folks see the results of because we see the numbers of unpaid meals continuing to mount up over time. Our next slide contains information about the students receiving special education in the Sioux Falls School District. We currently serve 3,824 students ages 3 to 21. We want to remind you of our birth to three program. We have staff going into homes to provide developmental assessments and support for families. And we also have students who have completed the 12th grade but can further benefit from work and life skills obtained through the Community Campus Program. When you look specifically at our K-12 population, that number is 3,527 students, which is 14.7% of our total student enrollment. And for the past 10 years or so, we've continued to look at if that 3,527 students, if those students were considered a school district in and of themselves, where would they fall in terms of size? And they would fall as the sixth largest school district behind Sioux Falls, Rapid City, Harrisburg, Brandon, and Aberdeen. We continue to bobble around between the fifth, sixth, or seventh largest school district, but we remain quite consistent in our number. but we remain quite consistent in our number of students served by special education. The district also serves 2,694 students with 504 plans, which allow for specific accommodations to support a student's success in the classroom. Dr. Boyson's report is going to share some of the academic success of our students, but this slide demonstrates the rigor and success of our programs. First, we celebrated 17 National Merit finalists in 2021, and currently we've been notified of 17 National Merit semifinalists for 2022. So we seem to be on track there. The finalists will be released in February 2023. So we look forward to that day, and of course, we will celebrate those students in the spring of next year who are named as finalists. Early on, and this is what I wanted to represent in the photos here, is very early on in elementary school, our staff starts talking to students about the year they will graduate. And to think about the class of whatever it is into the future seems so far away, but we want students to be able to see themselves and their futures and be able to plan for that and get excited about graduation and what they will do post-graduation, whether that's entering the world of work, joining the military services, or going to post-secondary education. And we want to help them envision that future. And then, of course, we can't forget about the recent national recognition of Sonia Sotomayor Elementary School as our 2022 Blue Ribbon School. This distinction from the U.S. Department of Education reflects the dedication of staff, administration, students, and the community working together to create an exemplary school. And that brings us to our final slide of the demographic report. And a quote from our leader, Dr. Jane Stavum, who says, "There are no limits on how far we can go when we learn together, focused on providing the very best experience for every person in our school district, becoming the best in the nation." And that concludes the demographic report tonight. And I would ask that you acknowledge the report, and I'll stand by for any questions. And if they are too difficult, those brilliant folks over there will be happy to support you.
Thanks, Diane. Any questions? I just, I'm always interested in this report because I just think it's so interesting, the amount of change that is happening in our district and that, you know, what district has to do to meet those changes and while still succeeding in educating our students. So thank you to the team for all that work. That one slide with 43 states and 41 countries just blows my mind because probably many of them didn't even have school for the last year and a half. So, you know, when we have to test them in the spring, nobody knows that when they see results. So that's something that people have to consider in the public, that, you know, we take them where they're at no matter what they are. So it's not always something that has happened in our schools, but we are going to get them there by their 12th grade.
Absolutely. Each student to succeed in a changing world.
Exactly.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the district demographics report?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes.
Go ahead. Next report is Dr. Boyson, and I wanted to just say a few words, if you will allow me to do so. I think this is the most important report that we hear every year because academic success is why we exist. And one of the questions that I am asked often, particularly when there are national metrics coming out, like we've seen over the last couple of weeks, what are the challenges that came directly from COVID? And I think some of the challenges that school districts face, including ours, existed before COVID. Some of those were accelerated or magnified during COVID, and some of them continue maybe in one form or another, or even brand-new kind of post-pandemic. But we continue to work on things academically very, very hard every single day. And it's very difficult to point to one thing as being a causative factor. When we look at the students, whether they've been with us since kindergarten or kindergarten or like Cynthia said, maybe joined us mid-year, we take them from wherever they are, and we move forward from there. And so I want to commend our teachers and our administrators and our support staff and the commitment of this community. Because Sioux Falls is a community like none other when it comes to understanding the needs that are presented, the challenges, as well as the successes that we see with our students. And it takes everybody working together in a community to keep this giant ship of public education afloat. And it is vitally important that we continue to do so. I also want to be very clear that in this district, we always have and we continue to invite parents to be part of education. We want them to read with our children. We want them to set screen limits and phone limits. We want them to support their learning, and we want them to be actively involved in school. And I love the theme that our students even picked up on with this annual from Washington because one of the things that we've really been focusing that I think is one of the dents from the pandemic is people being actively engaged in their schools. Volunteering stopped for a year. People coming to events stopped for a year. If you were a brand-new parent or a kindergarten parent, you had a very different experience during the pandemic, and it takes intentional work to reignite that engagement. And so we continue to work with that. But part of that is really getting families and parents reconnected with schools. We also know that there is continual churn around public education. And one of the things that I want to remind our community about is that public education is vitally important to the health of our community and to the state of South Dakota and to our country. And so we want to make sure that while we look at both successes and challenges, we know the importance of the work that we do as focusing on academic proficiency for our students, as well as what it takes to do that for all kids with the changes, with the challenges. And so with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Boyson to talk about that current picture of academics in the Sioux Falls School District.
Thank you, Dr. Stavum. School Board, tonight I bring you the academic report for 21, '22 school year and the great news of where our students are and where we continue to grow. And so tonight, we're going to focus on that balanced assessment system that monitors student learning, so those different markers along the way as it's related to the written district curriculum and the data collection from a variety of assessments. All assessments in a balanced system arise from the understanding that the primary purpose of school is to maximize student achievement. Assessment is the process of gathering evidence of student learning in formal education-related decisions. And on October 13, 2022, the South Dakota Department of Education released a report card. And tonight, we're going to look at the following areas: graduation rate, college and career readiness, the achievement scores for grades 3 through 8 plus 11, English language acquisition, school environment, which is translated to attendance, and then ACT and the SAT testing as that all relates to the reporting out from the Department of Education. Our first area is graduation rates. The high school on-time graduation rate for Sioux Falls School District has held steady at 4% to 5% higher for the sixth consecutive year, if we go back that far. And it has outpaced the state. And I think that's something that speaks highly of our high schools and all teachers really working on that graduation rate and making sure we get all students to that finish line. And the graduation for the third consecutive year, you know, we continue to grow, and we're getting back to that pre-pandemic rate. And the high school completer is another calculation that we use that we continue to monitor, and that's, again, getting students to reach that graduation beyond four years. So recognizing that some students take more than four years to get there, but they still get their diploma, or they persist towards the GED. And so the completer rate is a percentage of students who persist towards that. And the 21, '22 completer rate of 89.62 is 1% higher than the 21, '21. And then ACT. ACT is Curriculum-Based Measure of College Readiness. The test's academic achievement in the areas of English, math, reading, and science. The data presented here in the report reflects the achievement of the graduating class of 2022 of the Sioux Falls School District reported by students when they register for the exam. While students typically take the exam for the first time during their junior year of high school, the actual date students took the exam can vary. Additionally, the scores for each student reflect their best effort. And as a student can take that exam multiple times as they're choosing. So we have benchmarks. So English composition has a benchmark score of an 18. Algebra, social science, biology, STEM, all have different scores. So algebra, social science, 22; biology, 23; STEM, 26; and ELA, 20. So the Sioux Falls composite score, 22.6, again, higher than the state and national average. So again, our students continue to outperform those across the state and the nation. We had 58% of the students of the graduating class took the ACT, which is a 3% increase of the number of students that took it from the previous year. Nationally, only 36% of the students take the ACT. So again, the trend has been lower nationally, but Sioux Falls continues to outpace that, and we have students that persist towards taking that ACT. SAT is another aptitude test that a small number of students in the Sioux Falls Schools participate. We had 40 students in the class of 2022 participate in that. 97% of those students meant the evidence-based reading and writing scores, and 91% made the math benchmark. Another area on the state report card is the college and career readiness. In this area, we did have some indicators change, and so I'll explain those, the differences in those indicators. The college and career readiness for these cohorts, this is the graduating class of 2021. So it's, there's a year lag in that. The college and career readiness combines, I'm going to skip ahead one slide for you. On the left side of your screen is the old requirements, and on the right side are the new requirements. And so you can see that the assessment readiness measures academic performance from the ELA and math, ACT, and the NRCRC testing that we do at the high school level. Beginning the 21, '22 report card, the college course readiness measures have changed. So you'll see the chart on the left side, and then the graph, you see the chart on the left side, then the left side of that chart is the coursework readiness. And then if you move over to the right chart, that graph for coursework readiness reflects the changes. So they took out the CTE concentrator, the dual credit, and the AP. And now it's, you have, what have you earned for an additional endorsement? And that's the only thing under that coursework readiness. So that's really changed because we focus on CTE with all those different opportunities we provide for students. We look at dual credit and the increased number of dual credit courses, and then our high AP involvement in the Sioux Falls School District. So that impacted our scores in Sioux Falls, but also across the state. And so then if we go back a slide here, the blue, the first, is our coursework readiness. So last year in coursework readiness, we were at 75, and this year we're at 64. And so there is a difference there, and that indicator that changes is why we saw that difference. So again, our students, though, continue to seek out the courses in AP, dual credit, CTE, and then they earn those advanced endorsements through their, the coursework that they take. And then we'll move on to the achievement scores. And so the South Dakota Achievement Assessments for ELA and Math were administered to students in grades 3 through 8 and 11 during the spring of 2022. The Sioux Falls district scores in reading remain the same, so at 49% of our students. And again, we remained steady there while we saw the state decrease in their ELA scores. In math, we had an increase in our scores from 39 to 41, while we saw the state remain flat on their scores. So and as we break those down individually, we see that growth happening, and I'll share that information. We have a board work session on that in February, so we can look at assessment readiness and all the different indicators that go in there. So again, we are making great progress, and we're moving forward. And you can see that when we start to break it down by grade level. And the science scores, we, the science assessment scores individually are coming out, and the state will release those in January. If we look at, do we have growth on there? The next one is the English language acquisition. So students who are working towards that second language acquisition, Sarah Clausen presented this information to you in July. But again, it shows that we're measuring that proficiency based on their initial score. Students are placed on that curve, and they're expected to make that proficiency within five years. During the 21, '22 school year, 40% of the students who took the access assessment either exited or were determined to be on track, and this is up slightly over last year. So you can see, we had 29 on track who exited on, 29% on time and exited early. We had 11% for a total of 40% of our students, our EL students, so up 1%. And our last area we're going to look at is the school environment, which is attendance. And so nearly 86% of the K through 8 students attended school more than 90% of their enrolled days. And this continues to be a decrease at, in Sioux Falls and across the state. And we see that nationally, that attendance continues to be a concern statewide, but it is also a priority for the Sioux Falls School District. And so buildings and the district are working at, how do we improve attendance, you know, focusing on every single student, so one student at a time to help solve those, whatever challenges they have that are preventing them from coming to school. So the Sioux Falls district students continue to graduate at high levels and outpace the state and the nation on the ACT and national averages. Sioux Falls is closing the gap between the district and state average scores. Throughout the year, building leadership teams use multiple assessments to monitor student achievement and growth to support all students towards graduation. Student attendance also continues to be a concern as the patterns have changed post-pandemic across the state. And with that, I'll ask for acknowledgement of the report and stand by for any questions.
Do you remember the slide that had the comparison between the previous college and career readiness? That one?
This one? Yep.
Sorry. I'm not speaking light. So since this has been changed, that right-hand column to the new one, the high school graduation advanced endorsement, what will that testing, what is that endorsement going to be?
Yep. Yep. Good question. So that endorsement goes on the courses that they take. So as they work with their counselors, you can have the advanced honors endorsement, you can have the advanced endorsement, you have the college and career ready endorsement, or the traditional endorsement. And those are just endorsements that get stamped on their diploma, or not on their diploma, on their transcript. So it's really to help students identify.
Attract.
A track of the courses that they'd like to take through their four years in high school. But again, I might want to take a couple more CTE courses because that's an endorsement or dual credit. And so if they skip one of those, the advanced honors endorsement doesn't follow with the opportunity scholarship. So we have to make sure that that alignment's there and that truly those counselors work with each student individually and more focused on what's right for them instead of the advanced endorsement.
Yeah, because it sounds like the state's wanting them to kind of in general then attract, but yet we as the school district want to students, this is when they should be exposed to many opportunities to see if they do like or don't like. And I feel that's not a fair ranking if someone's ready or not because just because they only took classes in this one career.
We're very thankful to have the opportunities for students that we have in Sioux Falls.
Exactly. I'd rather continue to allow them to have more opportunities and choices at this point and succeed in them.
Yes, and this is one measure, so, yep.
Yeah, I was gonna, I wrote the same thing down as a comment, that I just don't really feel like that's reflective of whether a student is college or career-ready than feel like that's reflective of whether a student is college or career-ready, them taking a specific or having a specific endorsement. And we've talked a lot about dual credit and a lot about AP classes and how the rigor of those classes really prepares students to be able to go on to college or go on to post-secondary and succeed. And so I feel like taking the emphasis away from those is not necessarily helping to prepare our students. I know in the past we talked about that CTE concentrator, and I think our frustration with that was you wanted, they wanted you to stay within one career cluster, whereas our point of CTE is go take a class. If it's not for you, pick a different class and a different cluster and see if you can find out what interests you and what your skills and talents are. And so we didn't care for that measurement either because it kind of made you feel like, well, gosh, I guess I should take another class in this that I didn't really care for. And so I feel like there were definitely changes that could be made, but I don't, I don't know that they made the ones that I would have recommended. So I don't know. I think that as a district, we can be very proud of what we have to offer and the challenge that we can offer the students who want to go on to be either college or career-ready. Again, it doesn't always have to be that college. It can be those CTE classes that give you real-life work experience. It can give you those, or the dual credit classes that can help you for tech schools or whatever it might be. So I kind of see that as an unfortunate change, honestly.
Thank you.
I'm going to chime in just a little bit because this all kind of comes back to the attendance issue that many school districts are dealing with now post-COVID. And what our district has tried to do is both on the reactive side with how we notify and kind of take care of things when we are beginning to see a truancy pattern. That's one side of the equation. We feel like the best way to deal with that is on the proactive side by offering as many things as we can during the school day as well as after school so that students are engaged. That's the best way to get kids to school. That's been a statewide conversation with a study group with the legislators this summer about what to do about truancy. And I know one of the conversations that is likely to emerge from some of that work goes back to what does that completion factor look like and how do we maybe provide some alternate routes to a diploma or different types of paths to a diploma? So I think that's something to pay attention to during our legislative session. But the bottom line is if kids aren't in school, they aren't learning, and that can be for a variety of reasons. But from our youngest students to our almost graduates, parents in our community need to understand the importance of kids being in school, and that is a primary focus that we have to be diligent about because we know that is one of the most difficult things to recover once that begins to go in the wrong direction. And so we need to really have a heightened awareness about that across our city.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the Sioux Falls School District academic report?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion passes. Onto review of policies. Brett.
Thank you. There are six policies on the agenda tonight for your consideration. The first four fiscal policies are review-only, so there's no changes recommended to those. And then policy JH for student attendance, there is one minor clarification in the policy, and then a few changes to the regulation to update our absence recording and notification procedure specifically to reflect middle school's use of automated notification procedures similar to those at high school. So those are the changes of that policy. And then finally, policy JJAA has changes just to the regulation, and these are the district's rules for high school activities. The regulation sets out the minimum consequences for violations of activity rules. The change here that we're recommending is to lessen the consequences. Of note, it would remove the full high school career ineligibility as a minimum consequence for a student with multiple violations. The purpose here is to allow the school to work with students and get them back involved in activities and engaged in school. Unless you have any questions, I'd ask the board to approve the review revision of these six policies and their accompanying regulations.
Any other comments or questions?
No. We met and kind of talked through some different scenarios and what the impact of specifically the last policy that was just mentioned. And I feel like it gives us an opportunity to still try to engage, as Dr. Stavum just talked about, still trying to engage our kids even when they make a mistake. And so if you have a freshman who's already struggling and makes a poor decision, to feel like they then have been sentenced to four years of punishment is not going to be very engaging for them. And so in kind of talking about what does this mean and what could this look like, I feel like these are good changes that allow our administration and our coaches and our athletic directors to really have those conversations and get students back in to participating and hopefully back in with a good crowd of kids who are going to help them to make better decisions.
The other thing is, we've talked about lessening. It's still pretty severe stuff, depending on the classification of what the violation was. So it's not like we just said, oh, we're not going to follow rules. Rules have been changed a little bit, but they're still very, very severe.
Still consequences for the actions, but
Still consequences.
Hope of maybe
Right.
Deeming themselves in their education career.
All right, seeing no other discussion, can I get a motion and a second to approve the review revision of the six policies mentioned?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes. Anything else for the good of the order tonight? Can I get a motion and a second to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.